This is a meeting of the Township Committee, December 19th, 2022. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Independent, and the Tufts Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 7th, 2022. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sanambreno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have the presentation of the 2022 Veteran of the Year Award. At this time, I'd like to invite Dennis Beauregard to the front of the room, along with Bob Seamer, member of the Middletown Veterans Affairs Committee.
This is the first ever time that Middletown has been able to provide and give an award of this nature, and that is our 2022 Veteran of the Year. Now, if you don't know these two gentlemen here, Dennis Beauregard and Bob Seamer, both members of our Veterans Affairs Committee, and Dennis, our chairman, and a longtime advocate for veterans, veteran services, and everything that goes on with the men and women who have honorably served our nation, Dennis is a part of, in every way, shape, or form. Goes out to businesses, gets solicits donations from them, and makes it all happen. And this year, we went out to the public, and we solicited nominations for our Veteran of the Year. Who should that be? And these are the two hardest-working individuals you're going to find out there when it comes to veteran services. And I couldn't be more proud of everything that you've done for veterans, the things that no one ever knows about. Dennis, Bob, you deserve a round of applause just for all that. So now, when you go out and you ask the public for nominations, you don't know what you're going to get sometimes, but this year, we had two interesting nominations. One was for Dennis Beauregard from Bob Seamer, and the other one was for Bob Seamer for Dennis Beauregard. So, it's a nice conundrum to have, but Bob Seamer came to us, and for those of you who don't know yet, neither of the, well, the individual getting this award has absolutely no clue he's getting it. And that is my great friend and the chairman of our Veterans Affairs Committee, Dennis Now, if you've ever, most of you have never been to a Veterans Affairs Committee, but it can be very interesting, to say the least, right, then? Is that fair to say?
Fair to say.
Because there's often, you know, not battles, but, you know, that's a pretty good word for it. There's battles that happen. But this one was the friendliest of all, because Bob Seamer was told that he was going to be getting the Veteran of the Year, and he said, "No." He said Dennis Beauregard deserves it. And so, that put us into another pickle, like, okay, well, is he just being nice, or, you know, what should we do here? But Bob Seamer, the gentleman that he is, the great American, the great citizen, a great advocate, said, "I want the greatest of all advocates to get this award." So Dennis, on behalf of the Township, and really on behalf of Bob Seamer's nomination, all right? I'm honored to inform you that you have been chosen as Middletown's 2022 Veteran of the First thing Dennis says is not "thank you," he goes, "You lied to me and told me that Bob was getting it." So, Dennis, the Township Committee is hereby presenting you in recognition of your unwavering leadership on our volunteer Veterans Affairs Committee, and exceptional dedication towards improving the lives of all of our veterans, the Middletown Veteran of the Year.
Okay, in the spirit of good governance, I'll be brief, but...
That's what everyone says once they hit the mic.
When I got the nomination form, they said, "Limit your nomination to one page," which was impossible to do with Dennis. Just to list the titles that he has, you know, he's obviously the president of BVA Chapter 12, which is nationally recognized for the Cremains Project, everything else. He's the head of the VAC Committee, Purple Heart, he belongs to the VFW, American Legion, I can go on and on. But Dennis does it all. He's always out there doing things on a daily basis. And the thing about Dennis, too, is he leads by example. Not only does he volunteer his time, when there's things to be done, Dennis is front and center doing it. For example, we had a committee problem where we had to get the, you may have read about it in the paper, about the flags over the parkway. And Dick Furlong, a member of our committee, finally resolved the issue with the state of New Jersey. We were the first municipality in the state to get official approval to hang those flags. But who's up there hanging the flags? Dennis, along with some of the rest of us. Also, we had a banner, Dennis had a banner made up for the Veterans Affairs Committee. Who's going to carry it in the parade? Dennis. He does everything. And the final thing I'd like to say is, all the efforts that Dennis does throughout the year and everything, has one objective in mind, and that's to help another veteran. Dennis is a Purple Heart winner, he has other military awards, but he realizes he's fortunate in his position to help others, and that's what he does every day. Everything is to help another veteran. So again, I salute Dennis, and he really deserves that award. And because of that, henceforth, this award will be designated, the Middletown Township, Dennis J. Beauregard Veteran of the Year Award.
Dennis, you want to say something?
I was speechless, but, you know, it takes a team. Bob's my right-hand person, I got four other fellows on the committee. The hats I wear, I always surround myself by good people. Once you get things done, you gotta be willing to step forward, show the way, be a team. Now, this past November, I wasn't in town, I was down in Washington DC for Mastering the Colors, it's the 40th anniversary of dedication to war. So I asked Bob to do me a favor. Remember the program we entered, took us a year and a half to compile all the information that we needed for the state? And Bob accepted the award from Governor Murphy on Veterans Day. Now, Bob would like to present the Township with your award.
As Dennis said, we had to meet a threshold of points to accumulate them for different programs that we do. And Middletown Township has an outstanding Veterans Affairs Committee under Dennis's leadership. Everything that you see done, the memorial signs, the Thank a Veteran program, that's all under Dennis's direction. So, one little thing I want to tell you is, when I went to receive the award, there was other municipalities that were getting awards. But when they called out Middletown Township, I went up there, Governor Murphy handed me, and he says, "We got a great town, don't we?"
I'll take that. All right, let's give another round for Dennis. All of Dennis's family and grandchildren, if they want to come up very quickly, his wife, I know is here.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation recognizing Gollie Vied for acquiring a 9/11 Memorial Survivor Tree offspring for the Township of Middletown.
Gollie? Sorry, Heidi.
That's okay.
So, first off, I want to say this is the first time I've ever seen Gollie in a suit. All right.
Interviewed.
Oh, you interviewed. As all of you, I'm sure, know, earlier this year, the Township was very honored to receive the only clone ever given out from the 9/11 Survivor Tree. And for those of you who don't know the story, the Survivor Tree at the World Trade Center was taken from the rubble of the World Trade Center after the September 11 tragedy, and was, for lack of a better word, nursed back to health. And several of the branches were taken off of this tree and planted to try and root and create new life from something so tragic. And 20 years later, the Township of Middletown was the first municipality ever granted a clone of that tree. And now, if you go to the World Trade Center Memorial Gardens, right here in Middletown, as you come out of those gardens, and as you begin to approach Church Street and the MAC once again, you see that tree, you see that life, and you're reminded that even in America's darkest days, we are reminded of the hope, we're reminded of all the things that make America great, and that is represented in the life of that tree. Gollie was instrumental in securing that, and giving Middletown a municipality that lost more people on 9/11 than any other municipality outside of New York City. But that now has a permanent home, a home where it will continue to grow, a home where it will continue to thrive, but also a home that will continue to instill hope. And every time I'm at the MAC, just the other night, I went over to that tree and realized the beauty that it does represent. So on behalf of the Township, Gollie, we want to present you with this plaque, in grateful appreciation of your persistence in acquiring a 9/11 Memorial Survivor Seedling, and for your overall commitment and dedication to the Middletown Township World Trade Center Memorial Gardens. Gollie, it was an absolute honor, and this is the least we can do for all that hard work that you put in in getting it to us. Gollie, you want to say anything? Gollie's a man of few words.
I was also told to keep it brief, but I'll take the liberty of everyone else. This is a tremendous honor for me, and it's something that was a very meaningful project for me, but at the end of the day, it really wasn't about me. It was a great collaboration of everyone involved, from the mayor. I remember you asking me my opinion on some project regarding the gardens, and I think you generally wanted to hear what I had to say. And so I took a deep breath, and I challenged what you wanted to do. And I appreciate that you allowed me to voice my opinion. And then there's a collaboration across the board. I want to thank the mayor, the Township Committee, the administration, everyone that helped out make this possible. But at the end of the day, this really isn't about me. This is something that I felt very passionate about, about giving to the victims, and their families, and their friends, and to help a town that's very patriotic and cares a lot, to be able to continue to show that they care and want to heal and remember everyone. Yes.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the administration of oath of office. We have two police officers who will be promoted tonight. At this time, I'd like to invite Erica Weeks, who's being promoted to Sergeant, to please come forward.
You're right over there.
Pretty in pink right there.
Trying to so that they can hear us, I guess. Okay, ready? Raise your left hand above, raise your right hand towards God and repeat after me. I, Erica Weeks.
I, Erica Weeks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
All right, who's speaking?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sergeant Erica Weeks has been employed with the Middletown Police Department since 2014, after graduating the Monmouth County Police Academy. During Erica's time in patrol, she became a police explorer advisor and a field training officer. Erica was promoted to the rank of detective and was assigned to the Special Victims Unit, where she focused on juvenile and female victims, as well as biased crimes. Erica is a certified cell bright operator and analyst for forensic cellphone extractions. Erica is also a part of the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office of Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAT Task Force. In addition, Erica is a physical training instructor with the Monmouth County Police Academy, and a tactical medical instructor, and a member of the Monmouth County Rapid Deployment Force. Erica, congratulations.
I know, right?
At this time, I'd like to invite Adam Colfer, who is being promoted to Sergeant, to please come to the front of the room with your family.
I, Adam Colfer.
I, Adam Colfer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of Sergeant.
Of Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sergeant Adam Colfer has been employed with the Middletown Township Police Department since 2005. During that time, Adam was a field training officer and a member of our emergency services unit. In 2018, Adam was promoted to the rank of detective, and worked on general investigations. Adam has also served as a trustee on the executive board for the PBA, has served as vice president and a two-term president with PBA Local 124. Prior to joining the Middletown Township Police Department, Adam served in the United States Navy from 2000 to 2004. Adam is joined here with his children, Joshua, Kayla, and Hannah.
Who wants to stand next to him?
At this time, I'd like to invite John Saltisik to please come forward for promotion
How do you not want this little fellow coming up here, you know? He wants what? Okay. Problem is, she's got her hands now, too. I, John Saltisik.
I, John Saltisik.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
And the 2022 cutest swearing in goes to... I was wondering who was going to last longer, me or your wife, John?
Slurping. Dance around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant John Saltisik has been employed with the Middletown Police Department since August of 2007. John has served in a variety of added functions within the department, some of which include firearms instructor of every platform that we have, an armorer, a field training officer, an active shooter instructor, a member of our emergency services entry team, and our sniper observer team. John was promoted to sergeant in August of 2019, and has been serving in the and has been serving in the capacity of acting lieutenant since August 2022. Prior joining to the Middletown Township Police Department, John served in the United States Marine Corps from November of 2011 to November of 2005. John served as a rifleman in the 3rd Light Armored Reconnaissance Battalion and completed active service at the rank of corporal. John's service in the Marine Corps included Operation Iraqi Freedom 1 and 2 and Operation Phantom Fury in Fallujah in 2004. After military service, John graduated with an associate's degree in history from Brookdale Community College and a bachelor's degree in history from Georgian Court University. John is currently enrolled in a master gunsmithing program with the American Institute of Gunsmithing. John and his wife Kelly have two children, as you see, JJ and Abigail. Congratulations, John.
You don't want to stay up here for the next one?
At this time, I'd like to invite Stephen Keller to please come forward for promotion to lieutenant with your family.
Oh, Heidi, I was gonna jump in there. I, Stephen Keller.
I, Stephen Keller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
Will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last one for me as I'm losing my voice. Lieutenant Stephen Keller has been employed with the Middletown Township Police Department for over 23 years. Prior to that, he served for five years with the Monmouth County Sheriff's Department. Stephen currently serves as the administrative sergeant and training coordinator in police administration. Previously, Stephen served as patrol sergeant for six years. Stephen has served in a variety of added roles and functions within our agency, including lead instructor, police youth week instructor, field training officer, firearms and rifle instructor, crisis negotiator, he's a former member of our emergency teams tactical team as well. Stephen received the FBI Trilogy Award recipient in leadership and earned his associate's degree in criminal justice from Brookdale Community College. Stephen is joined tonight by his wife Debbie and his daughter Carly. Congratulations, Stephen.
Hey, Heidi.
At this time, I'd like to invite Chad Basick to please come forward with your family.
Okay. I, Chad Basick. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now, I'm not sure what badge I started out with back in 2019, but this is number 400 on Middletown's badge list.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Chad started with us. He's actually been a resident here in Middletown for the last seven years, moving here from North Jersey. He, prior to his swearing in tonight, Chad served with us as a class one officer, which, uh, for any of you that aren't familiar, it's, it's really the, the bottom rung of ranking the law enforcement agency. You're not even armed. Chad has really proved himself with our agency. He volunteered an awful lot of his time with assist with youth week, national layout, uh, and even some of our active shooter scenarios. So he's, uh, he's really put in the hours and shown that he's a dedicated officer. And I'm very proud of him. I'm glad you're on board with this, Chad. Congratulations.
The front of the room with your family.
I, Anthony Bartolome.
I, Anthony Bartolome.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
He's good. All right, Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Officer Anthony Bartolone is a resident in Middletown for the last three years. Prior to that, Anthony served in the United States military for four years, particularly in the Army, correct? British Services Army. He was formerly a class one special officer with the Middletown Township Police Department, and again, a lot of his time was spent down in the shore area, Ideal Beach and whatnot. Actually, Anthony, while he was on duty there at Ideal Beach, he came across a swimmer that was in distress, uh, actually entered the water, uh, and performed lifesaving duties and saved that man's life. So he's shown that he absolutely has the integrity and the commitment to the residents of this community, and, uh, we're very happy to have him.
Congratulations, Chief.
At this time, I'd like to invite Joshua Chambers to please come forward with your family.
I, Joshua Chambers.
I, Joshua Chambers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer.
Officer Chambers resides in the city of Carteret, New Jersey. Josh is fluent in Spanish, as well as English, and, um, he attended the Middlesex County College, where he earned an associate's degree in homeland security. Josh, uh, proved himself in the Monmouth County Police Academy in his performance in the various skill sets that are taught there and instructed there, and really distinguished himself as one of the finest cadets, which, uh, or not cadets, excuse me, one of the finest recruits over there. Uh, and actually came to our attention through his hard work at the academy. And with that, the backing of the township committee, the mayor, the rest of the committee members, and the administration of township, we were able to bring him onboard the Middletown. We're real happy about it. Congratulations, Chief.
Hey.
This time, I'd like to invite John Foyd. Please come forward with your family.
I'm assuming this isn't your first swearing in. Came up with all these badges. I'm like, what badge am I given at? Thank you both for your services.
I, John Foy.
I, John Foy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Oh, yeah. Chief Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor. John Foy is a lifelong resident of Middletown. As you can see from the jewelry that, uh, both his mother and his father, uh, are currently wearing, uh, he comes from a long line of law enforcement in the family. His mom is a retired captain with Bayonne.
Correct.
And his father is a retired detective with the Jersey City Police Department. So John comes from good stock. He, in the academy, just to speak to his integrity and his character, uh, out of all the recruits that were there, uh, John was actually elected by his classmates to be the class spokesman, uh, and he really, he knocked it out of the park. I felt bad for the person that would follow him at the gates. So John's worked real hard. Being a resident here in Middletown, he's, uh, he's grown up his whole life in Middletown, and I know that he's gonna serve the community well as he goes from. Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Dana McQuaid, please come forward with your family.
I, Dana McQuaid.
I, Dana McQuaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God. Congratulations.
So Dana, again, is a, one of our officers that's been a lifelong resident of Middletown. Dana, from a very early age, really showed this affinity to law enforcement. She actually attended the Academy of Law and Public Safety, Law Branch, as part of the Middletown Township School System and the Monmouth County Vocational System. In addition to that, Dana actually served as, as a police explorer with, with our agency and going through middle school and high school. That kind of commitment is unusual when you've brought it. So congratulations, Dana.
Forward with your family.
Yeah.
I'm not normally the shorter guy. I looked up and there was a shadow. I, Thomas Stone.
I, Thomas Stone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Anthony.
This is it. So, so Tom, Officer Stone, he is, he is also a lifelong resident of Middletown Township. In addition to his residence here, he is, he too served as an explorer, at our Explorer Post, and also served as a Class One Special Officer with our agency prior to getting hired full-time. So Tom has, Tom has shown him to, shown himself to, again, be very committed to the residents of Middletown Township, and we look forward to all the good things coming in this career. Congratulations.
All right, before our police, the rest of our police department, let's give them a round of applause for all they need to.
You done with your snack break? Are you good to go? Wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure before I tell how you... Just before, just before we get back to the agenda, I do, and I must mention our great police chief, Craig Weber, and all that he did for making this night possible. You know, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, but, but I do want to give him a, a shout out and thank him for his leadership, his dedication, and his commitment to finding not only, getting folks to, to the point where they can become effective lieutenants and effective sergeants, but then finding the right people to be our next group of police officers, our next group of folks coming up and defending us each and every day. So to, to Craig Weber, on behalf of the entire Township Committee, we're certainly appreciative of everything that you've done. Okay, Heidi?
Hey, our next item on tonight's agenda, we have the approval of minutes. Our minutes are for executive session, June 6th, 2022, June 20th, 2022, July 18th, 2022, August 15th, 2022, September 6th, 2022, September 19th, 2022, October 3rd, 2022, and October 17th, 2022. We also have special meeting, November 9th, 2022. We have the November 21st, 2022 regular meeting, and the December 5th, 2022 workshop meeting.
Motion to approve.
Miniman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have public hearing on proposed ordinances. We have ordinance 2022-3361, an ordinance approving entry into contracts for a purchase of real estate identified as Block 276, Lot 77.022, otherwise known as 95 Main Street, and Block 136, Lot 5, Church Street, to advance the Port Monmouth flood control project.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3361. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, we have 2022-3362, an ordinance authorizing sale of Block 502, Lots 1 and 7, known as 37, 37-45 Leonardville Road, to the nonprofit Middletown Redevelopment Corporation for redevelopment of Affordable Veterans Housing Project.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3362. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, I'd like to invite the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 22-319 through 22-333, including bingo and raffle applications and firefighter applications.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt a consent agenda. At this time, we have Resolution 22-334, a resolution appointing Willis Kratz to fill vacancy on the Township of Middletown Sewage Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Recuse.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 22-334 with recusal noted. At this time, we have Township Committee comments.
All right, Committeeman Clark. First, I'd like to congratulate Dennis on his award tonight. I've had the pleasure of knowing him and his family since I started at River Plaza Elementary School and kindergarten. He's always been a great person to the community, long before I knew about his military service. He was very helpful at River Plaza and Thompson, so no better guy to get that. Comes from a great family as well. To our officers that got promoted, a lot of hard work and dedication went into getting to the point where they could become eligible for promotion, and super proud of all of them. And then to our newest officers, I wished each and every one of them the opportunity to stay safe and serve proud. It's a, truly is an honor to become an officer, whether it's in the police department, the fire, EMS, or any of the branches of the military, and they're going to do very well for us. I truly believe that. And then last but not least, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah, and I hope everybody has a safe and happy New Year. Thank you. Thank you, Committeeman Sedambrino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Committeeman Clark. They were excellent and, and on point. Thank you very much. I, I think they're excellent points, but I will tell you, when I saw all of the new officers... officers being sworn in, Jesus, I feel old. They, they are a fine testament to what Middletown has to offer, and it protects its citizens here in town. So I'll certainly agree with everything that you said, and I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and then we'll see you for the New Year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz.
Thank you. Just also wanted to congratulate our officers that were both our new hires and to our officers that received their promotions. We are so fortunate in town to have such dedicated officers who, who serve our community, and very thankful for, also for the leadership of our chief. Congratulations to Dennis for, for being recognized for his service to our veterans, both local and statewide. I've had the pleasure to serve as the, on the Veterans Affairs Committee as the liaison, and I was blown away always by their dedication of service and to their fellow veterans. And I, I would be remiss not to also mention Bob Seamer, who is a gentleman through and through, and, and really just so selfless. So he deserves a wealth of recognition also. And just to end with, during the holidays, we're, we're really so fortunate to see how our neighbors care for one another, and that was shown no better by the many events that all of us attended, that money and, you know, for food, for gifts, through Middletown helps its own, through our social services, through our private citizens, mostly children. We were all blessed to attend. So really a testament to community and neighbors helping neighbors, and it's really what the season is all about. So I wish everyone a blessed Christmas and a, and a happy, healthy New Year.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, real quick, Dennis Bowrigard, he's, he's the guy that gets things done. So him and Bob are just, they're always there, they're always involved, so I appreciate that. I know this whole committee does major league way. Tree, that's an awesome addition to, to the MAC, to 9/11. That was a fabulous job he did there. I know you had to push for that one, so thank you. Appreciate that. To our officers, I mean, it's the first time that the mayor looked old today, right? Did everyone agree with that? Had to bring that up in my comments.
He's always gotta hit me. He forgets that I talk last, though.
Yes, yes. We always have, and we're always lucky to have the best of the best. I mean, just to hear their resumes or backgrounds, it's really amazing, and promotions, I mean, it is, is all great stuff. So everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and we'll see you next year.
All right, thank you all very much. Obviously, a tremendous way to end our last Township Committee meeting of the year with so many promotions, so many swearing in, so many honors bestowed upon great people. Which brings me to my, my only comment for the night, and that is, obviously, as I mentioned, this is our last Township Committee meeting of the night, and I always want to end each year by saying how much it's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your mayor over the course of 2022. I'm honored to sit up here with incredibly dedicated individuals, both as elected officials and as our professionals, to all the people who make it look so easy. I, I know it's not, but I am incredibly grateful as the mayor. I'm incredibly grateful to serve and, and serve alongside each and every one of you, whether you are up here on this dais or a member of the public. It's, it's always an honor. So thank you all very much. Have a wonderful, wonderful holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year, everybody. Okay, with that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? John, come on down.
Everyone go. John Spinelli, 91 Burlington Avenue. I just wanted to say, you know, just for our, for our first responders in this town council of appreciation and thank you for keeping Middletown this past year a safe and family-friendly town, and just want to say Merry Christmas, everyone, and let's go, Brandon. That's it.
You know what, John? I didn't see you going there, but, I really didn't. But Merry Christmas to you too. Thank you. All right, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Okay. Folks, it's been an honor once again. Thank you all, and I'll see you all in 2023. Motion, motion to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you all.